Council meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Chapman. I'm going to move on to Councilmember Clayton.
I'm here. I was unmuted.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
And we have City Attorney Donna Viero attending the meeting, City Attorney Frederick Rofetto attending the meeting, and Michael Manzello, Deputy City Manager, also attending the meeting. We will now stand, well, I'm sorry, when I can stand, we'll have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America and to its recovery.
Stand one nation. As to comply with the open public meetings act, chapter 231, P. on 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Esberry Park Press, the Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special events applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are three applications before you this evening. The first two are from the kids organization. The first event is Peace in the Park, which would be held on August 16. Next is One Mic, One Soul Open Mic, which would again be held in Springwood Park on the 22nd, and One Wedding on October 10. And that's it.
Any questions? Okay, if not, next.
Okay, we're on to Madersham City Council.
Hi, this is Aileen Chapman. So I just want to remind everyone that we still have one free COVID test available on Friday, August 14th, from 9:00 to 1:00 in the Esberry Park Transportation Center. You do not have to be symptomatic. This test consists of a nasal or oral swab, and it is free, no appointment necessary. You simply walk up and a health professional will help conduct the test. Also, the city will be giving away back-to-school supplies to Esberry Park students, grades K through 12, on Saturday, August 22nd and August 29th, from 10:00 to 1:00. It's rain or shine. Supplies are limited. Registration is required by calling 732-502-5751, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. This is for Esberry Park residents. Masks are required. And if you have further information, you can reach out to Cassandra Dickerson or Alicia Floyd at City Hall. That's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
I just want to remind everyone again that the census is still being collected, and it's really so very important that everyone fill out the application. It's a very simple process, and anyone can do it, and it's in a number of different languages. And within the next month, if you have not filled it out, you will be receiving a visit from someone who will be asking you to fill it out in person. And that's it for me.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes, I have two shout-outs and one reminder. The Good Hope Baptist Church in Esberry Park on Washington Avenue, for the last three weeks, has been giving out boxes of fruit and vegetables. And tomorrow, on Thursday, it'll start at 10:30. So we gave out over 1,600 boxes of fruit and vegetables, all sealed up. And I'd like to shout out to the Esberry Park Police Department, which is there every Thursday that we give out the fruit and vegetables, and also the Esberry Park Little League. The second shout-out I'd like to give to the Esberry Park Music Foundation. Has done a wonderful job over the last, I guess it's been four or five years now. And Eileen, I tell you, the joy that you have brought and entertainment with your committee, you guys are doing a fine job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
My pleasure.
Oh, can I just add one thing? Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Yes, I noticed, I usually even on my porch, about 5:00, 6:00, have a coffee, and I noticed that so many people are walking their dogs. That's not a problem. But the problem is, nobody have masks, and everybody's talking to one another and mingling. So I'd just like to just say, hey, we have to do a better job of getting the word out to people that wear their mask. This virus is not over yet. That's it, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yeah, so I'm just going to piggyback on Eileen and reiterate the free asymptomatic testing, which has been a real success in Esberry, and that we are currently, you know, really, for lack of a better word, begging the county to extend that and keep it in Esberry. So stay tuned in the hopes that we can get that extended. That's all.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, I just piggyback on Jesse. Please, 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 please. When out in public, wear your masks. Thank you.
Hey, Madersham City Manager.
Yes, I have a few quick announcements I'd like to make regarding some staff changes. Lisa Esposito is now officially been promoted to our Deputy City Clerk. She's been kind of doing the job since this pandemic hit us, and Melody was our acting clerk. So just want to welcome Lisa officially to the ranks of Deputy City Clerk, and thank you for all that you've been doing over these past couple of months. Another promotion we've had is Tahisha T. Gates, who is now our interim Fire Marshal. She has been appointed that position due to retirement of Garrett Dyberson. And then we've also hired a new deputy tax collector, Patty Martiselli, who's been with us now for a couple of weeks. So those are just an update to the staffing in City Hall. That's all I have.
Madersham City Attorney.
I have nothing, it's just time, Melody, thank you.
We are on to items to be presented. We have Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Zoning.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Michelle Alonso. I'm here to give a presentation about an exciting time for us here in Esberry Park regarding buying renewable energy. We have been approached by Sustainable New Jersey and other municipalities in Monmouth County to form a aggregate energy group where we would be able to bid and buy at a lower cost than our current energy rates, sustainable energy, or at least 40% to 42% of it being sustainable. Tonight, on the council agenda is a resolution to accept Red Bank municipality as the lead, who would lead us in this effort to bid and, if desirable, accept a bid and enter into an agreement to purchase sustainable energy. Mike, next slide. So what is our, I'm here to present tonight to let you know what is an RGA. It's a Government Energy Aggregation, which allows municipalities to purchase electricity on behalf of residents. And we're looking for this to be sustainable energy. And we would contract after going to bid with third-party suppliers, and we would have a review by an energy consultant, a review by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, and of course, review by our municipal attorney. We, as a municipality, Esberry Park, we're too small in population and most likely energy usage to go out and seek our own rates and bidding for a better price for sustainable energy. And so we would form this alliance with other municipalities. And this is not new in the state. Currently, up in Essex County, there's the Essex County Consortium, and they have already gone through this process and are also willing to hold our hands in going through this process ourselves. Next slide. So there are some municipalities that are large enough that they have their own RGAs, and they're listed on the slide in front of you. Glen Rock, Livingston, New Brunswick, Princeton Plainsboro. The Sustainable Essex Alliance is a shared service RGA contract, which is again what we would be looking to do with Red Bank, Long Branch, Bradley Beach, Neptune City, and possibly Eaton Town. But the one that exists now is Glen Ridge, Maplewood, Montclair, South Orange, and Verona, up in North Jersey. Next slide. Mike. So with this program, residents can opt out of it if they don't want to participate. And we would have a fixed contract with a fixed timeframe with the energy provider, which typical is 18 months. And so we would have a locked-in rate for those 18 months. And residents, and it would be lower than the current JCPN L rate. But any resident has the opportunity to opt out and continue to purchase their energy through the JCPN L provider. Next slide. So this chart, the consumer, the resident, everything would remain the same. They would still get a bill from JCPN L, and they would see no difference except a small amount of savings. And JCPN L would still be in charge of repairs to the lines if there's a power outage. They would still be the ones to call. So the resident, there would be nothing different for the residents. So currently, New Jersey does require percentage of electrical supply to be procured from a renewable source. And it changes annually. But with us doing this alliance, we would be purchasing a higher percentage, somewhere around 40%. Next slide. So the first step, the very, very first step, which is on tonight, is to accept Red Bank as the lead. Red Bank as the lead would actually do almost all the work for us. And they would be the ones to put out the bid for consultants. And all the municipalities, we would get the bids, and all the municipalities would agree upon acceptance of the bid. If favorable to the municipality in the group. If it's unfavorable to the municipality, in other words, we don't like the agreement or what's being offered, or the rates are too high, we can drop out of the alliance. Next slide. So some of the steps that we would do is we would enact an ordinance creating authorization of the RGA program. We would do outreach to the constituents. We prepare for the bid process. We would, and part of that, it would be reviewed by multiple entities, including the BPU and our own attorney. And then after we all find acceptable, we would award the bid, us and all the participating municipalities. And again, if it's unfavorable to this municipality, we can drop out of the alliance. And again, a consultant will hold our hand through this whole process. They help seek the bid, and they do all the paperwork, and they also assist us with the outreach to the residents. Next slide. So what can impact the bid process? The usage, the more usage generally means the better pricing, and that's because Esberry Park is a smaller municipality. This is why we're going to team up with larger municipalities that have more energy usage. The more municipalities that become part of our group, the better. We're more competitive. Next slide. And some of the frequently asked questions is how much will it cost to hire the energy consultant? And it costs us nothing. And again, we're under no obligation to make a contract if we find it undesirable. And then at the end of the period, we choose, because we can choose anywhere from a year, three years, five years, for the locked-in rate. And again, if a better rate comes along during that period, we can drop out. But at the end of the aggregate contract, we can roll into a new contract, or we can completely abandon the initiative. Next slide. And like I said, if there's a storm, JCPN L is still in charge of the line. And as a resident, if you want to stick with JCPN L, you can stay with JCPN L. And there is also a continued balance billing plan. So anyone who is on the balance billing monthly equal payment plan, they can still continue to do so. And again, we would participate in this. We will see a small savings, and that's also an incentive for us to participate. Besides purchasing clean energy, and it's fair for the environment, it'll also give our residents a bit of a savings. Next slide. So the model that has already happened and that we're following is the Sustainable Essex Alliance, which is Maplewood, Milburn, Glen Ridge, South Orange, Montclair, and Verona. Although what I have to note is Milburn dropped out. Because after the bids came in, it wasn't cheaper for them, and they dropped out. So they're not, they are not part of the alliance. But this is a timeline showing all the steps from November 2017 to March 2019. And as you see, after we put out the RFP, and it will be Red Bank who's going to do it with our input, that an energy consultant will help us with each step. And then we would do the municipal operations of passing the ordinance to create the program. And after Red Bank passes it, and then Red Bank would do a resolution authorizing the cooperative purchasing system, and we would do so. And then we would go into contract, and we would go into our contract period. Next slide. And this is again, this is about the process and the bidding, where the bid day process, we would all receive, all the municipalities would receive the bids. We would be in a conference call, and we would decide whether to participate or not. And the winning bidder has to provide at least 40% sustainable energy. And in Essex County, they decide to do a 17-month contract, and the average homeowner saved $125 over the 17th month period. And I will reveal that, because, make people know that I live up in North Jersey. I'm part of, I'm part of this aggregation group. And yes, I have seen a savings in my energy bill. And I believe, and that's it for my presentation. I went very quickly, trying to be as concise as possible. But the bottom line is, tonight's resolution accepts Red Bank as the lead. At this point, we can drop out at any time if we don't want to go forward. But with this resolution, it lets Red Bank know that we're on board, because within the next two months, that they would like to start the process and go out to RFP. So with that, with my brief and quick presentation, does anyone have any questions?
So Michelle, this is Eileen. I just want to say that a lot of this conversation took place in the city's green team as we're paying more attention to our environment and identifying how we can make some change, both as individuals and as a city. We all looked at this initiative and felt that this was something that would be beneficial to Esberry Park on a city level and for our residents as well. And even though, you know, Michelle may have saved $125, and that doesn't seem like much, but the fact that we're using more renewable energy and helping our environment is, I think, the primary reason why we were behind this.
Any other comments?
Seeing none, thank you, Michelle. Good job, and Melody, next.
Okay, we are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Move it, Aileen.
Second, Yvonne.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. I am calling upon 5124. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rita Moreno, voice of reason. I was looking at the bill resolution, and I thought we were going to get this from the county, the money for the risk management. And could you explain what risk management is? And the other thing I wanted to talk about was, it's just a rumor, but I believe it's true, that people in the city that haven't worked since March, they work from home, which we thank them, that they are getting comp time. I mean, this is really something, if it's true. Comp time for city employees that have been working from home since March, right? And the other thing is about what Michelle just talked about. They go around to all the houses and ask people if they want to get electricity changed and get a different rate. I don't know how different that is than what you're talking about. Maybe a group would be better. I don't know. But I'd like to know how much you could save. Now, the other thing, too, was, if you look all over town, you'll see all these antennas that are up on buildings. And, you know, you're not allowed to go near a microwave if you have a pacemaker or a fibrillator. And now we have all these buildings that are surrounding us with radiation. I think that you should take control of what goes on these buildings. That's only my opinion. That, I spoke to the one man that talked about the radiation that comes out of those antennas. And he said, "My refrigerator takes more, gets more radiation than those antennas." But he was on a different frequency. So I don't think that was the correct answer for me. I'm really worried about that because they're all over the town about the radiation. I know we have one on the store plant, and I don't think we're getting enough money for that, not when I hear what other buildings are getting. And it's just, I don't know. I don't think it's right to put these things on apartment houses, condos. And they're all over. They're on Esberry Towers. Now they're going to be on the Espinade. They're on Deal Towers. They're on every building in town. How does that affect us? Because I know they have these towers, like in Bradley Beach has a tower with all the telephone connections on there. Why do we have to have them all over town? Why can't they find one location and put them there? And that's my question. Oh, the other thing, the bill resolution. Has that bill resolution been paid for already? Or is it going to be paid for? Or have they been paid, I should say? That's it.
Okay, Rita, I've tried to answer some of them. As far as like the project Michelle explained with Red Bank taking the lead, I'm sorry, it's John Moore. As far as Red Bank taking the lead, as much as like the savings was only $125, like Eileen Chapman said, it's not necessarily the dollar savings, but what we're doing to the earth in general as far as more green and more efficient. As far as antennas, anybody who applies for an antenna has to go through Construction Department, and they have to meet all the codes and requirements. So I don't see that being a problem. We can check with our Construction Department. But I'm sure, we have one of the best construction departments in the state, if not the best. And I'm sure every law is being looked into. As far as like one central location, like, we don't have a water tower in Esberry Park like Allenhurst does or Belmar does, so they can't just go in one place. The one at the sewer plant is temporary. That should be coming down in a month or two, and I think we got top dollar for it. I think we're getting more than where they're going to put it at the Espinade. As far as the bill resolution, I believe, I'll let Donna confirm. I believe the majority of them, I'll let Donna answer that. As far as risk management, I wasn't sure of the question, I'll let Donna answer that. As far as rumors, rumors are a dime a dozen. So if Donna wants to answer, that's up to her. I think I answered everything except those three. That's up to Donna.
Thank you, Mayor. So Rita, regarding the risk management bill, I'm sure that was the one for T and M. And yes, we will be submitting that for reimbursement under the CARES Act to the county. The way the program works, unfortunately, though, is that we actually have to pay for the service, send a check to the vendor, and then submit all of these payments to the county, then they reimburse us. So we have to put the money out before we get reimbursed. So you'll be seeing a lot more on the next bill list for our next submission, which will be done at the end of September. Regarding comp time, that is a contractual obligation that the city has to provide due to the way the contracts are written. I will tell you that I just had a conversation with our labor attorney. As all of these contracts are expiring this year, we will be looking to make changes to the way some of these payments are made out. All comp time has to be approved prior to getting it through the department head. So we're following the processes in place for the management of that as per the labor agreements. I think that was it.
Okay. I am now calling upon Maureen Nevin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, Maureen Nevin, 3 DLA Court. Thanks, Melody. Okay, before I forget, when you call in, by the way, Michael Manzello is there. The road, DLA Drive, looks beautiful. It's all striped, as they say. But the spots still seem too long. You know what that's about. I just wanted to bring it to your attention for the third or fourth time now, that when people call in, Zoom instructions do not say star nine. They say star six. So all you have to do is call in yourselves and listen to the instructions, and you'll see it says star six. So you may have thirty participants on the call, but if they're pressing star six, they're not going to be heard. So, and that could be why you're not getting complaints from anybody else. Okay, I wanted to ask about the bond ordinance 2020-24. Obviously, that's an ordinance, so we'll be able to ask questions later. But I wanted to know what to include. There's not a lot of information on the agenda. And I realize that it probably, is there more information, more detail on the actual ordinance printout? Don't answer me yet. And... Okay, I just wanted to say, for Rita's sake, I believe the gentleman that gave the talk about the radiation from the towers said that the radiation on the antennas is not medical.
One minute remaining.
It's not medical grade. So that is what makes the difference between someone with a pacemaker or whatever not being affected. But, you know, you could argue that with him, I guess. All right, thank you.
Does that complete your comments? Does that complete your comments?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Donna, if you're going to expand on 2024 a little bit?
Sure. So this is a bond ordinance for improvements to Bond Street. We received a grant in the amount of, I think, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So this bond ordinance is to supplement the remainder of the work on Bond Street.
Hey, any other comments?
Next.
Yeah, and just that we'll look into the star nine and the star six, and if I clarify for the next meeting.
Thank you. I am calling upon Claudia Daniels Morgan. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Claudia Daniels Morgan. My address is three oh one West Pennsylvania Avenue in Neptune City. My question is in regards to Hope Academy Charter School. I'm the president of the board, and we recently purchased a building at five hundred Grand Avenue. And through our attorney, Steve Kors, he informed us that we were going to have a problem with the playground that's on the property and the fence. And we were in contacts with Michelle Alonso regarding an easement, and we were told that the easement is not available to us, and that we will have to remove the playground equipment and the fence within thirty days. And we just want to know why this is going on, when we were told something different.
Do you have any other questions, Claudia?
No.
Okay, that completes your comments and questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, John Moore, I'm sorry. Yes, it came before the council, and the council decided, because of many reasons, the most important one, liability, for this was twenty years ago or so, wrongfully put in the city right of way. And to leave it there, now that it's come to our attention, that it was put there illegally, and the city would be responsible for, God forbid, if somebody drove through there, or, say, your playground equipment was faulty, and it's in the city right of way, the city would be legally liable. So that was the main reason, and there was other reasons, but the main reason is city liability, and plus, it does not meet our zoning laws.
Okay, I am now moving on to one nine six seven. Please state your name and address for the record. One nine six seven. I'm going to move on to, I'm calling upon Dee Pratt. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Davisha Pratt, and I live at thirty-one Cedaran Drive in Toms River. I am the chief school administrator, superintendent of Hope Academy. Thank you, Mayor Moore, for responding to our board president. I just had a question in terms of the turnaround time regarding the removal of the equipment, given that, you know, there is a lot going on with schools. Hope Academy has been a part of Asbury Park for over twenty years, and I just wanted to know if there was any consideration the council would consider in terms of schools having a lot to plan for regarding reopening in terms of trying to get the equipment moved. So is there any consideration, if there could be any consideration, regarding the time period for the removal of the equipment?
That, I'm going, it's John Moore again. I appreciate it. Were you done, Ms. Pratt?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to let the attorney get in touch with you and Michelle Alonso. Again, part of it is, like, we cannot let you open and use that equipment because of the liability factor. So if you're saying, like, we're going to shut it down, but we need another fifteen days to get it out, or there's something, including the fence is one thing, but as far as using it, absolutely not because of liability. And as far as, like, I was under the impression, like, this property hasn't even been sold yet, and it was the applicant looking to buy the property that filed the complaint and asked about the playground equipment. So that's something like, again, I'll let, you can talk to Michelle Alonso, and she can talk to Fred, but as far as the council's concerned, we cannot let you open up and use that equipment because of the liability factor. And again, it does not meet zoning. And again, I'm not even sure if you own the pro, I don't even know to this point who owns the property, because I was told the people that applied to continue using it didn't even buy it yet. So it seems to be a little bit confusing, but as far as, like, using it to open the school year, absolutely not. Thank you.
Hey, I'm calling upon nine 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 zero zero. Please state your name and address for the record. Nine nine zero zero.
Yes, hi. My name is Stephen Kornus, and my address is thirty-four ninety-nine U S nine North Street, one F in Freehold, New Jersey, zero seven seven two eight.
Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
Okay. May it please be the city of Asbury Park and City Council, Mayor Moore. I am calling from the law firm Pamela Neiman and Wright. I represent Hope Academy Charter School. With respect to your previous comment, Mr. Moore, please be advised that Hope Academy is the owner of five hundred Grand Avenue. The closing did occur in June. Just one thing I did want to make the board aware, these properties that are on Grand Avenue do have the feature, or unfortunately, do stick out to the public right of way. A little bit of the history given to me by the seller's attorney that I'd like to share with you, the playground equipment that's currently on the right of way was installed on or about in nineteen ninety-six by a former tenant, Little Potts Preschool. So that hasn't been an issue since ninety-six. I know the city has inspected the property numerous times and previously has issued certificates of zoning compliance with the property despite it being on the public right of way. And there are several other properties on Grand Avenue that also stick out on the public right of way, including Alphabet's preschool, seven oh one Grand Avenue, which also has a playground on there. So, you know, I do bring this to the council's attention because it does seem, you know, it seems a little unjust, if you will, that, you know, they're getting, unfortunately, getting singled out here.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. In terms of moving the playground equipment, I just asked the council if it would be at all possible, you know, if there was some sort of way, even if we, you know, could negotiate something where, you know, the city wouldn't be held liable if there was an issue, you know, to potentially reconsider your decision not to move forward on the, on Hope Academy's special easement application. So thank you for your time, and this concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kornus, John Moore again, I'm sorry. I thank you very much for your remarks, and I understand them. Again, it is a liability problem. The council made up its mind. The council's not going to change its mind as far as other properties when they come to our attention, because I think a property just north of yours came up to our attention with the same fence. So I think that's going to be looked at also by zoning. And as far as the playground being put up in nineteen ninety-six, we had a playground put up on the beachfront, many years less than that, which was deemed unsafe. So the city has to, like, take it down and rebuild it because it's not safe. So we don't even know when the last time you just bought it, when this playground equipment was checked, certified, if it's ever been checked and certified. So I can only apologize for past mistakes from previous councils and zoning boards, and but I'm sorry, it's going to have to come down. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to Sherri Sanders Jones. Please state your name and address for the record. Sherri, please, please state your name and address for the record. Sherri? Okay, I'm going to, let's move on to Pam Lamerton. Please state your name and address for the record. Melody, anything?
Hi, Pam Lamerton. Hello? This is Pam Lamerton, three twenty-one Sunset Avenue. Regarding the playground at Hope Academy, I don't know if anybody remembers, but just a few years back, the city vacated a street next to that building, between that building and the Civil War monument. Perhaps that Hope Academy would consider bringing the playground out around the corner to that it gave to them just a few years back. Also, I was wondering if the Transportation Committee would consider more fifteen-minute parking spaces around the city. A lot of strike-type retail and restaurant pickups going on, and we don't have those short-term parking spaces everywhere we need them. So I would like them to be considered. Thank you.
Does that complete your comments, Pam?
Yes.
Thank you, Pam. We agree with you. We think that playground equipment could be put to either side of the building or the back of the building. There seems to be enough room there. Again, that's going back to, like Mr. Kornus said, that again, it's holding the city not liable. Everybody knows, like, everybody gets sued, and then we have to fight our way and pay many dollars in legal bills to get out of the lawsuit, no matter what's put in writing. As far as, like, extra fifteen-minute spots, I'll let Mr. Manzella chime in. Number one, you can attend the next parking committee meeting via Zoom and make the request, but you already made it now, so we'll take it under advisement. But we did put in extra fifteen-minute parking spots, knowing that we were shutting down part of Cookman Avenue to make it easier for the residents and for takeout dining. So I think that's already been addressed. And Michael, if you want to expand on that, go ahead.
Yeah, all I will say is, this is Mike Manzella, Director of Transportation, that any business that has requested a fifteen-minute spot on a temporary basis during this pandemic has received it. So as long as the request comes in to me or to the parking committee, we will make sure it happens.
Thank you.
And moving on to, let's try Sherri Jones again. Sherri? Sherri Sanders Jones.
Hello, can you hear me?
For the record? Yes.
Hi.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sherri Sanders Jones. I live at eleven seventeen Fourth Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I am a board, I am the vice president of the board at Hope Academy Charter School. We understand that we have to move the playground, but we will not be utilizing the space until twenty, sometime in twenty twenty-one, because we have repairs that need to be done. And we're focused on reopening, our reopening plan for our students. So I was just, I just need the question answered. Can it, can the thirty days be, can the thirty days be moved, or can the thirty days be extended? That's it. That's my question.
So, okay. Mayor Moore, this is Donna. Let me, if I could just chime in, I just reached out to our attorney, Fred Raffetto. We're going to have a call tomorrow to discuss this, and then we will reach out to the Hope Academy before the end of the week with some guidance once we go over everything and discuss it with you, Mayor.
Okay, fine. And that's why I didn't want Ms. Jones cut off, because you're saying, and Ms. Jones, are you still there?
She's not, but I can, I have her number, Mayor.
Okay, well, okay, Ms. Jones, if you can hear me, and Mr. Kornus, Principal Pratt, and Ms. Morgan, like, you're asking for an extension. I mean, are you asking for, like, and I'm being facetious, are you asking for five years, or are you asking for five days? I mean, like, give us a number. I mean, what are you looking for? It makes, may make our decision a lot easier. So if you can get us, like, hey, we need fifteen more days, but if you say we need fifteen more months, you know, it's going to make our decision a lot easier. No, you're not going to get fifteen more months, but if you need, like, another thirty days or something like that, let's try to work together on this and figure it out. And like Donna just said, she and Fred will talk, and then all of us will talk. Thank you.
Okay, I am calling upon six nine four two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Kerry Butch. I live at five hundred D L A Drive. How is everybody? Um, I'm actually calling because I'm just following up on the Starish Development Initiative. It looks like you guys have an amendment for that, and I would request that you reach out to the folks that had created that plan and discuss with them the amendments. I'm looking at it now, and it doesn't even have a name to the folks that created the plan originally, but it was kind of a grassroots initiative done by, I guess, Susan Sono at the time.
Hey, Kerry, 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 it's John Moore, and I'll give you the extra time. I'm taking it away from you. You're breaking up terribly. So I mean, I missed the beginning. I'm missing, like, the middle. So, yeah, so if you want to start over again, we'll start you with another three minutes, but your phone's terrible.
All right. Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you better now. Go ahead. Go ahead, Kerry.
Do we still have Kerry? Sherri? All right. Do you want to move on to someone else?
I want to move on to somebody else, but Michael or somebody, can somebody email Kerry or text her, whatever it's called, and make sure that she knows she can get back on the line? It sounds like she had a legitimate concern, but we don't know what it was.
Okay, I'm moving on to one nine six seven. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. This is Matt Smith, one-two-three Livingston Ave, New Brunswick, New Jersey. But I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of, I'm the state director for Food and Water Watch, speaking on behalf of our three, over three hundred members and supporters in the city.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank Michelle Alonso for a wonderful presentation on community energy aggregation. I think in this moment, when we're in a pandemic and we're seeing that residents who have higher exposure to air pollution are suffering the worst impacts from the COVID crisis, that it becomes even more imperative that we make smart choices about the kinds of energy we choose in our towns, because, you know, energy production is one of the most, one of the largest sources of air pollution here in the state of New Jersey. Much of the state suffers from poor or failing levels of ground-level ozone pollution, recording sometimes between ten or twenty-five days, depending on where you live, of days where it's unhealthy for people to be outside and breathe the air. And community energy aggregation, aside from leveraging bulk purchasing to get more competitive rates and more predictive rates to lock in a price for an eighteen-month contract with the flexibility for people to opt out at any time, is also, just feels like a practical way that our municipalities can lead New Jersey to a healthier environment, to protect clean air, make sure every resident in our state has access to clean air. It's not all of the solution. This is, these are complex problems that we face, but it is one practical thing that our local government can do, especially with, you know, just the lack of any federal leadership on these issues. And in fact, federal, you know, obstruction on, and going back, you know, to days when we had even worse quality of environment and quality of water and air in our country. So, yeah, I just wanted to say, on behalf of our supporters, we support Asbury Park's taking up this issue, and we look forward to, yeah, helping educate our members and supporters about it. And, yeah, just very excited to hear that this is an issue that the city is taking up in this moment. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John Moore here. I thank you for your comments. I totally agree with you, and I'm going to tell you something. I will be shocked if it's not a five-zero vote to pass it. So I think everybody's going to be happy at the end of the meeting. So, and stuff like this, I'm usually right on. But again, I think the council was very receptive. I think Michelle did a great job of presenting. I think it's something that's deeply needed. I think Eileen Chapman, the Green Team- I think it's something that's deeply needed. I think, uh, Eileen Chapman, the Green Team has done a great job. Derek, everybody involved, uh, appreciate it and, uh, I look forward to voting yes on that. Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, try and see if we can get back to Carrie.
So Melody, I just emailed her to told, told her to email us if she can't get back on the meeting. I don't see her on, on, you know.
I don't either.
She had, she had sent a chat to the host, this is Mike Manzella, and I told her, um, if you want to try again, to try and raise your hand, press star nine. Um, but I don't see her hand raised at this time.
Okay, not seeing any hands raised? Do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Ja- hold on a second, John, John, John Moore. Okay, I, I feel bad because Carrie was talking and I cut her off. I hope I didn't, I mean, I didn't push a button to knock her off the phone. So I mean, I've never asked this before, but during the course of the meeting, if she should call in, I would have no problem taking her three minutes, but I'll leave that up to the entire council and the administration and Fred. And you say, John, you're gonna open up a can of worms. But again, she was talking, she had a lousy hookup. Come on, Rita, Rita, call her and tell her, come on, Maureen, call her and tell her, like, call in. I mean-
I-
Uh, Melody, someone else does, has their hand raised?
I do, I, I do have a hand raised now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm calling on 6942. Please state your name and address for the record.
All right, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to cause so much of a commotion. This is Carrie from Dale Lake Drive. Um, I, my question is just really about the Starz redevelopment initiative. Were the folks that were, um, on the original plan, did they get notified that, that the, of the amendments? And did, were they discussed with the people that created the plan? That's all. Thank you.
Does that complete your comments, Carrie?
Yep, she said thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Carrie. I'm not sure, Michelle Alonso, if you're on, if you can answer that.
No, um, we didn't reach out to the, I'm not, I'm not even sure who the group is. There's no reference to the group in the redevelopment plan. I do want to add, from your last comment, Carrie, I believe it was improperly thought that houses of worship were, were not permitted under the plan. They are permitted under the plan. But really, you know, putting forward this plan for, was really two reasons. Number one, it expired and we need to go forward and re-adopt this plan, uh, for legal continuity. If it's not re-adopted, we have a, we have an issue. And then the other portion is that we, again, brought some of the zoning back into alignment with the master plan recommendations and the architecture and the, the prevailing architecture and housing stock of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, not seeing any other hand raised? Do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Kendall, move it.
Quinn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. The meeting is now closed to the public. We will now move on to the consent agenda resolution. I'm sorry, minute, I'm sorry. I have the minute for the Executive Council meeting of July 22nd, the 5:00 p.m. meeting, the Municipal Council, Council meetings of the July 22nd, 6:00 p.m. meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Moore's second.
Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Chapman? I'll move on.
Eileen, you're on mute.
I couldn't get off mute. Um, it wasn't allowing me to. Um, yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda resolution. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature. There will be no individual discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired by one or more council members, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have Resolution 2020-224, which is the resolution approving special events applications, Resolution 2020-225, which is a resolution to credit sewer account 2603-11806 Bond Street, Resolution 2020-226, a resolution to credit sewer account 2705-4610 Second Avenue, 2020-227, a resolution to credit sewer account 1803-26907 New Street. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Eileen Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
We'll move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 2020-228, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
Okay, we'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to Resolution 2020-229, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2020 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJFA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, Justice Assistance Grant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Do I have a second? Okay, we'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-230, which is a resolution for emergency contracts for the continued purchase of personal protect, protective equipment and supplies as needed following CCC guidelines. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2020-231, a resolution authorizing increase to the bid threshold. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Quinn.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-232, a resolution amending a contract with A-plus technology for additional parts needed for the access control security system via change order one. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-233, designating Red Bank to serve as the leading municipal agency as part of the Sustainable Month Aligned Energy Aggregation Program. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-234, a resolution amending contract with IEC for the emergency cleaning of the RBCs via change order number one. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
I want, now we'll, to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-235, a resolution to refund sewer account relating to block 2404, Lot 10. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-236, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park releasing the performance bond for the parking lot development located at 1500 St. and 1201 Monroe's Avenue, Block 1503, Lot 7 and 8, and accepting a maintenance guarantee. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Moore, Moore's second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-237, a resolution referring to the Planning Board certain proposed amendments to the land development regulations of the City of Asbury Park, Chapter 30 of the City Code, to amend Section 30-15, definition 30-61, signs and various subsections of 30-56, design standards general pertaining to lighting, landscaping, and fences. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Quinn.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-238, a resolution authorizing referral to the Planning Board, a proposed revised official zoning map. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-239, a resolution referring to the Planning Board certain, certain proposed amendments to the land development regulations of the City of Asbury Park, Chapter 30 of the City Code, to amend Section 30-15, definition 30-66, zone districts, 30-67, schedule of zone district area, yard and building requirements, 30-68, supplementary zone district regulations, 30-71, use regulations, non-residential districts, 30-73, supplemental use regulations, 30-75, accessory uses and structures, and 30-76, regulations governing conditional use. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-240, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, authorizing a $23,810 emergency appropriation pursuant to NJFA 40A-4-48 to fund a down payment for a bond ordinance, authorizing the undertaking of improvements to the sewer wastewater treatment plant, including but not limited to the replacement of rotating biological contactors below 3%. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 2020-22, an ordinance adopting amendment to the strategic area rebuilding spirit, Starz redevelopment plan, public, with a public hearing date of September 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Uh, resolution for introduction 2020-23, a bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond, bond ordinance number 30-38, which provides for improvements to the sewer plant heretofore finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey on January 16th, 2013, to increase the appropriation by 500,000 and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes by 476,190, with a public hearing date of September 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Quinn. Second, Quinn.
Okay, we'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Bond due, excuse me. Sorry about that. Run two, a bond ordinance 2020-24, the bond ordinance providing for improvement to Bond Street, a transportation utility improvement binding in the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, appropriating 2,600,000, therefore, including a grant expected to be received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation and authorizing the issuance of 2,600,000 bonds or notes from the city of the city to finance the cost thereof, with a public hearing date of September 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Hey, we'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman? Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Before we move on to adjournment, are there any more comments? Motion to adjourn?
Move it, Quinn. Second, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May you adjourn.